May we please stand for a pledge to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For the record, this is a special meeting, public meeting of the Bayonne Board of Education. It is 6:14 PM, the seventh day of February 2019. We're convening in the Anna J. Herbert Meeting Room. The presiding officer is Joseph Broderick, President of the Bayonne Board of Education. Those in attendance include Dr. Gary Maida, Board Secretary, and Mr. Mitchell Pasquale, Esquire, our Board Counsel. The meeting is open to the public. I will take a roll call. Trustee Alonzo.
Present.
Trustee Cruden.
Present.
Trustee Munoz.
Here.
Trustee Velardo.
Here.
And President Broderick.
Here.
As the five members of our Superintendent Search Committee. Mr. Broderick, just a short statement.
For the record, adequate written advance notice of at least 48 hours. Given the time, date, and location of this meeting, with the agenda as provided as follows. Notice was prominently posted in City Hall at 6:30 Avenue C on the bulletin board reserved for such announcements of the Board of Education. The Board Secretary sent such notice to the Jersey Journal and the Bayonne Community News. Notice was filed with the municipal clerk of the city of Bayonne, Mr. Robert F. Sloan. Notice was posted on the Bayonne Board of Education website.
Thank you. Okay, trustees, we're here tonight to start our Superintendent Search Planning Meeting. At this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Dwight Fennig from HYA Associates. I'll let him reintroduce his colleagues. And then, obviously, there, I know there's a communication from Dr. Wonko that I'll ask, do I have a motion to accept?
Yes, I'll motion.
From Trustee Cruden.
I'll second.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
And a second from Trustee Velardo. On that motion and second of accepting that communication, Trustee Alonzo.
Yes.
Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Velardo.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
The floor is yours, Dwight.
Thank you very much. Actually, we're pleased to be here to work with you. As I said in our initial meeting about a week ago, we look forward to doing the Bayonne Search. I'm Dwight Fennig. I'm the Senior Consultant for the search. That just means I've been working for HYA longer, and I've done about, I think, 33 searches to date. I talked a little bit about my background last week, but maybe for your record, at least you have it. I'm a former superintendent in New Jersey in three districts, North Plainfield, Keyport, and Morristown. I was Deputy Commissioner of Education under Governor McGreevy and Commissioner Labara. I went on to be Superintendent in Pocono Mountain School District after that for six years. My work following my retirement from Pocono Mountain was as an Assistant Professor at SUNY Cortlandt in the Educational Leadership Department. I've been doing Superintendent searches since part of that work and then after I left there. I'm a former English teacher in Cranford and Middletown Township, New Jersey. I've been an Assistant Principal and Principal in Keyport and Superintendent in Keyport, and that's been my career. I'd like to, you did get to meet Dr. James last week, but Eugenia Lawson is joining us this week.
Hello, I'm on.
As you know, that weather had a little twist to it at the beginning of the meeting, and Eugenia, we say she copped out, but you know, but I allow her to introduce herself.
Good evening, everyone. And as Dwight said, it's a pleasure for me to be here. I did get to 12527 and called Dwight. I said, you know, my car is going all over the place. I'm coming from Motion County. And I said, I'm more concerned about the ride home. So I apologize for not getting here last week, but was just very honored that we got the news that we were able to be here to work with you for the duration of your search. I actually, the last position I held was a contract position with the Lakewood Public Schools as their Superintendent. Prior to that, I was the Monmouth County Superintendent of Schools for five years, being part of my work at the State Department of Education. I started there in 1992 and as a coordinator for grants and Title IX, and became the manager of all the three regional training centers, which had me working with all the urban districts in the state, and then became the Director for all of the abbots in the state of New Jersey. So my work at the department was basically A to Z. I pretty much had done every job at the State Department of Education. I actually did not retire after the last kind of change in the Superintendent's office, but did not go back to anything full-time at that point because life took me in another direction. So I actually started doing work with another search firm, do real estate. I helped my husband with his business, you know, so I had the opportunity not to necessarily have to go back to anything full-time. So this is the kind of work that I have been doing since 2010. So again, it's a pleasure to be here and look forward to working with all of you. Thank you.
And Dr. James.
Good evening. You're gonna have to excuse me. I'm fighting a little cold, so I kinda sound like maybe if you heard of him, Barry White, so excuse me.
Sultry.
I started out in 1972 as a physical education teacher at Plainfield High School. I stayed at Plainfield High School for approximately 13 years, 10 years as a phys ed teacher, and three years as a Vice Principal. In April of 1985, I moved to Hillside High School where I was principal there for 20 I was gonna retire after 33 years in Hillside, but I got a phone call from someone and asked me, would you be interested in applying for a position as Assistant Superintendent in the Pocono Mountain School District? So I was gonna refuse that until my secretary talked me into applying. So after four interviews, I got the position as Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Education in the Pocono Mountain School District. I retired after 40 years, 2012, but I just couldn't stay home. I decided to venture out into the college field, and I became an adjunct professor at William Patterson University. I observed student teachers. I'm an advisor for four teachers in the Patterson School District who are striving to become school administrators. I am a mentor to a principal in the Patterson School District, elementary school principal, and I am also associate with HYA. And I'm looking forward to working with you all to find the best Superintendent in the country for Bayonne School District. Thank you.
Usually, it's our practice to go through the, we've done the introductions, to go through the planning meeting agenda, which I know that you have in front of you. But I do realize there may be some questions from the Board about another matter, which I would like to address if you would raise your questions to me. And maybe I can begin by saying a couple of things. I'm aware of the article that you have received, and there may be other articles out there as well. And one of the things that I think that HYA prides itself on is vetting candidates. And when you, when we looked into not only that piece of that article, but where it occurred, and then took a look at that in addition to all the searches I have done, I can say a few things for sure. Number one, that one article doesn't tell the whole story, as most articles do not. Were some of those things true in that article? Absolutely. Were some of them, I'm not gonna say false, because I don't know where the reporter's sources was, and these days, that's difficult to tell. I would say one thing, though. The district that hired that particular Superintendent mentioned in that particular article, and I'm not highlighting the other places that they set on the side, but I'm saying, they did know about that background. HYA did provide that information. They chose to go ahead with that. We're not throwing a district under the bus. We don't do that, but I think it's important that you know that that was the story there. We're kinda proud of the due diligence. I don't wanna go through every case they mentioned there. We've done probably between 1,200 and 1,500 searches nationwide over the last several years. To say that none of them ever had a flaw in it would be not true, because I think as with any business, there are flaws in businesses that they have that maybe don't get reported publicly. And this day and age, there are a lot of things that get reported publicly due to things that you may not know about while you're involved in the search. And one of them are called sealed documents. You know, if you have anyone, for instance, leave your district and there's an agreement for either retirement or separation, a lot of times those documents are sealed. In some of the cases that were brought up in that particular article, there were sealed documents that were released. Some of them were a result of FOIA requests, which, you know, the Open Public Records Act, and having been an original member of that commission in New Jersey when that started, I can understand what that means. But some of the sealed records aren't supposed to be released even under those circumstances if they involve personnel. However, some of them got released anyway. That number of searches being compromised, none of which happened in this area at all in the East, is a very, very small percentage of all the searches we do, well less than 1%. And to say that everybody would be perfect would be a misnomer. I can tell you about a couple of searches that I've done and what happened when we did some background checks, because we think we thoroughly vet people in those searches. And I'm not gonna use names for the obvious reasons, but you know, we had one search where we did a Baker U-Banks check that we told you about with the firm that we used, and they did the financial check on a person that had several court decisions against them for things that were not settled. You certainly wouldn't want a Superintendent to be taking over finances of a major school district for millions of dollars with that background. And when we found that out, and that was getting near the final stages of the search, the person was asked to withdraw first, because we would always do that, or if not, we would not put them forward. I've had another case where we actually had a Superintendent ready negotiating a contract, and he just backed out of the search totally. Was there any particular reason for it? No. And one would say, well, wouldn't you know that a Superintendent or a person who wants to be a Superintendent is going to back out at that stage of the search? No, you wouldn't, because they had a change of mind, you know, for the stated reasons they used, be it family or not wanting to move to that area, but they had not let us know that. When we handle our searches initially, and we have initial interviews with all the candidates we will screen, we ask two questions, you know, and usually it's right at the very beginning. Is there anything out there on Google websites or anything else that could compromise your candidacy for this position? Is there anything else out there that may be in records somewhere that would compromise your being eligible, either eligible or seeking this position along the way? And we expect people to give us the right answers. If we find that people do not, and we find that out of our own recourse, obviously they're out of the search. And in most cases, if they've not told us the truth, or probably in all cases, they're not with us again for a search. We don't permit that. We do now, we use the Board Portal for a reason. You know, it's easier and cuts down on paperwork, but it also lets you read through all the documents that people have submitted to us that we receive. We also, you know, for the Board, and done confidentially, we have it for slated candidates, those who, you know, we may recommend to you for moving forward, and for all the candidates who may have applied, we redact their names. I think I explained this last week, but we put that up there for you to review as well. And if there are questions about those candidates, we'd certainly answer them. If we have any indication of something that would adversely affect the candidacy of a person, we would be on that right away and either not forwarding that candidate or recommending highly to you that they do not. However, in checking those things, you know as well as I today, there are depths of Internet. There are bloggers who are out there who make a profession out of slating people, and sometimes for personal purposes or personal vendettas, as well as professionals who have legitimate claims to that. We try to check all of that that we can. One of the things I think that we're unique in that we do is if for any reason, you know, a Superintendent, if for any reason something were happening where you couldn't continue that Superintendent for a year, whether it be based on those checks, something coming out that none of us would have known about, or if it were for another reason of performance after one year and most likely two with our guarantee, we come back and do the search all over again for nothing. We wouldn't do that if we didn't feel our reference checks for the vast majority of cases were done well. I think in all of my, in all of my searches, I stand on my work, because, you know, I don't know if I should say this on TV, I don't care about HYA's reputation. I care about my reputation, all right? And I think my reputation, while it's tied to HYA, I did searches before and I'll probably do searches after. And my reputation's on the line as well as the company's for that. And I wouldn't want my reputation to in any way be tendered as disingenuous or misleading. If we find people have conflicts, we'll address them. And if we think you need to know about that and can help us with that, we'll address them. If you feel you have candidates that have conflicts and we may not have mentioned it, we would like you to address that with us, and we'll do all the hunting after that. All of my searches have had, you know, one or two candidates in them that I have not moved forward for a number of reasons that are out there, some of them professional, some of them because of bloggers that have posted things up there. If you have a candidate that has not performed well, you need to know that. But by the same token, districts separate from Superintendents for a lot of reasons. And it's just like a corporate change in a CEO. You know, some of the Board members may not have liked that person, and they may be a very good Superintendent. We'll find out that difference for you. You know, is it a person who left because of, you know, just a change in the, well, we'll call it for lack of a better term, the politics of the situation? Or is it a person who left because there were genuine concerns about their performance and what went on? And we do that kind of check. I guarantee my work. And you might say, well, that's easy for you to say. We don't know you. You know, you work for HYA. Well, you know, I would be pleased to, you know, present the names of the people with whom I've worked on the searches to, you know, and we've done that with references and things that you could check on some of the searches we've done. And if we find out things about candidates that sometimes you don't need to know, we might just say we didn't move that person forward, because we found that there are things you couldn't handle. Those things can be very real, or those things can be put out by bloggers that no district should have to handle in terms of public relations. And, you know, you will be held under close scrutiny for the Superintendent you pick. We are well aware of that. And we're not gonna deliver candidates to you that we think don't match up to what you have to face as well as what we would have to face in that vein. I used to say to my Board, you know, if I get surprised by something, said it to my administrators too, Milk might vouch for that a little bit, you know, if we're at a Board meeting and I get surprised by something and the Board is not surprised, that's not a good thing. If the Board gets surprised, you know, if there's a lot of surprises going on and neither one of us knows about it, that's better, because that means neither one of us knew about it. I shouldn't be surprising you without you knowing about it. You shouldn't be surprising us without us knowing about it, so that we know, you know, what's going on with the information that you get. We'll act on it quickly. You know, the, we own our mistakes, HYA. We own them, and we own them publicly, but by the same token, where those things occurred, it's in a very minute percentage of the work we did. I've had none of that occur in my searches, and I've had several cases where I didn't move candidates forward, because I knew the Board would have to encounter a lot of answers to a lot of questions about particular candidates, either by candidate's admission or through our Baker U-Banks check that we did. I'll stop there.
There were, when I Googled it, there were, you said they were not in this area, but there were a lot of, they named Denver, they named Minnesota, Michigan, Tennessee, Texas, Highland Park, Nashville, Pennsylvania, Louisiana. They named an awful lot of places.
Yeah, and HYA is represented probably at least in all the 50 states. I don't know that they do outside of that in terms of, I don't know them to do outside of that. Yeah, I mean, some of those cases have occurred in a number of states, and some of them don't hold up to the scrutiny of the article in terms of finding out, you know, more details about them. You know, and it's a very, it's a very public job that you have to do, and a very public job that we have to do. But I will tell you unequivocally that, you know, HYA's vast reputation is a strong one, and I stand by my reputation in working with you, if nothing else. And I think, you know, you can count on us to do that due diligence report. If candidates come from New Jersey, I forget how many years Eugenia said she worked here, but you know, we've got over 100 years between us. So, you know, we know a lot of people in New Jersey. We're just talking about that, because we hadn't seen each other together for a while, about the people we know, the checks we can do. And again, you likewise know a number of people we may not know, that you wanna tune us into. In terms of Board members, some of you belong to the School Boards Association and have those ties. Some of our teams, I worked on a search team with another Board member, and two teams, one in New York, actually, two in New York. And when we did the Newark search, the other member of the search team was a Board member for 30 years, nationally known and reputable. So we have those kinds of places where we can check on it. I won't tell you HYA has never missed something. I will tell you one thing, though, none of my searches have come out that way.
They've all used the same company that you used, though, for the vetting, right?
Yeah, but with the Baker, the Baker U-Banks vetting, at least on one particular search, and it may have been more than one, it was about sealed documents being released. Even Baker U-Banks can't get into sealed documents, no matter what they do. They do check now, though, and we check on the certifications of people, but also the degrees that people work on.
Yeah, what if they mention a man that didn't have the degrees that he, he was hired anyway, but he didn't have the degrees?
Well, I can tell you, that won't happen. You know, and one of the things I know all, most Boards have told me, and we haven't been that intimate in the conversations of the search yet, you certainly want people to be certified in New Jersey, or at least be eligible, or guarantee it as much as I can. And I can't guarantee it as strongly as I could before, because Bob Higgins just retired from the Certification Department, and I hired him. I used to be able to get a quick answer, but I still think we can reach into New Jersey and get that answer, but, you know, that person would not have made it through us, through the three of us. How they got to that stage there, I don't know.
Right, so that was gonna be one of my questions. So you three will be handling our search.
We're handling your search. We'll handle the relationship with Baker U-Banks. We'll handle the relationship with anything that comes up on vetting, anything.
And none of this that we found on the Internet, you three were related?
Oh, absolutely, no.
Or, you know, involved with?
No.
Okay, I'm just asking for clarification.
No.
And then, just, I don't know if we can talk about this, but can you just, a quick synopsis of what your firm offers as far as personal touch or services that you offer that school boards and NJSPA does not? Like what do, why, why HYA over NJSPA?
You know, the, part of the thing is candidate vetting is one of them. We bring to you a slate of candidates that we feel, we've talked to the candidates and we've reviewed them. I'm gonna search in New Jersey right now, and I found, and it's a district that, like you, cares a lot about the next Superintendent. I did pre-screening interviews for 33 out of 36 candidates, because I wanted to make sure that I didn't miss anything just by paper screening. So you talk to them a little bit and you get the idea. That's a personal touch. I'm not sure school boards does with that many candidates. I haven't been familiar with exactly what they do and everything. When we bring a slate of eight to 10 candidates to you, we will say, this is what we know about the candidates right now, and we suggest that based on our interviews with them, the people we know, the letters they provided at that point, and the vetting we can do on the Internet at that point, and that's at the beginning point, that they meet the qualifications that meet the characteristics you'd like to see in a Superintendent based on a leadership profile. I do not think that, I don't think that school boards does a leadership profile like we do, with the detail of talking with all the focus groups in the community that we do, and then the detail of that report when we're done, which includes a survey. They may do a survey, but I think our leadership profile is one of the best. I don't know that, I think most people are using now some kind of technological communication. I don't know if they have a portal where you can review the materials. You know, we're still on mixed ground with that with some Boards, because some Boards are not, you know, as technologically savvy as other Boards. It depends on what your experience is in. But we provide almost like a library online where you can go that's confidential to you and that you can see only. So, yeah, go ahead.
And one more question. So, all right, so in some cases, it seemed like there were some sealed documents that unfortunately you didn't have access to. School boards wouldn't have access to them either, correct? Right? I mean, if they're sealed, they're sealed.
If they're sealed, they're sealed by the Board of Vet and/or a legal process, and school boards has no more legal authority to go into personnel files than we do.
Right, okay. So I wanna make sure. Thank you.
Can I ask one question? Have you had candidates here that you've found that have left within the first year? Like what, have you had Superintendent candidates that you've brought to, they've signed a contract, and they've left within the first year?
Yes.
You've had a few?
I haven't had in any of my searches. Well, let me qualify that. I was asked to jump into the Bridgewater search, Bridgewater Routin' Search to help out. They hired a Superintendent, he left after one year. He'd come from another district in North Jersey. He left because he wanted to join the other members of his family in California, all right?
Okay.
I had, I have knowledge of another Superintendent hired in New Jersey who left in less than one year, all right, because there were things going on that he needed to leave, and I'll leave it at that. And that was determined by the Board. So, you know, HYA was committed or contracted to go back and do that search. That district chose not to bring them back. So, you know, but that was still in that agreement. I've had one candidate who was picked to be the Superintendent, was in contract negotiations, and left that search the night of the contract negotiations, and we had to begin all over again, and we did that all over again. That was in Maipack, New York. All right, so, you know, so I've had a couple of those.
You're talking about speaking to focus groups. Do we have a meeting planned for when, Gary?
We already planned.
Okay.
You have one meeting for a community focus group, but as we talk about focus groups tonight, there will be smaller focus groups that you'll help us determine, and we'll do, we'll deal with any focus group with whom you'd like us to speak.
We had planned on having administrators and everybody at that focus group.
Yes. Well, you know, yeah, administrators, you know, and then how you wanna break them up, central office administrators, building administrators, secondary teachers, elementary teachers.
Well, we didn't, we didn't wanna spend a lot of time. We wanted to move it along. That's why we thought we'd have the one meeting.
Well, if you do the one meeting for the whole community and all the groups to meet together, sometimes, you know, I'm never against one big community meeting, ever. And again, we deal with three questions. Number one, you know, what do you like about the district so far, you know, that you've seen, you wanna keep, programs you wanna see intact? Number two, what are the challenges facing the district immediately down the road or long-term? And then what characteristics would you like to see in a new Superintendent? A community meeting has one impact, but then if you have individual focus groups, you get different kinds of answers that are important to the search. You know, when we, when we come in and say we do those groups, you know, we're gonna do them over a three-day period. We're not gonna be taking weeks and weeks and weeks and weeks to do that.
And there's absolute value in being able to gather that from the different groups. I mean, what you're gonna hear from administrators is gonna vary from what the parents are feeling. So I think that there's value in being able to kinda split them up a little bit. I mean, we're willing to be there for those, so I would say avail yourself to our services in doing that.
Yeah, and that's part of your question. That's kinda that different touch, because we wanna make sure we include as many as possible.
And there's one thing I'd like to point out, like, I mean, I can't speak to the validity out that anyone could on this Board about the stuff that have come before us, like certain stories and links of that. But one I did come across where it looked like the article was blaming you for a gentleman who was hired for the Superintendent of the Houston Public Schools. And then he left within like two months, because he actually accepted the Chancellor of the New York City Schools right after that. So I'd like to point out that, I mean, I think that's unfair blaming your search company for that, because just because a Superintendent signs a five-year contract, that means we cannot terminate them without cause within five years. It doesn't mean that they can't leave within that five years, and I think that that seems to be a confusion where they're like, well, they left before the five-year contract. You know, we can't keep them if they decide to leave, right? I mean, that's the, so, I mean, I just, there are some things in here that I found, well, not this particular article, but that I found in my research seemed a little unfair, because you cannot stop someone from taking a job in New York City. I mean, I can understand why he left Houston, it's New York City.
But even, but even, but even in that case, we would've said we'll come back and do the search for free with our guarantee.
Right.
Yes, and Houston took you up on that.
Yeah.
They did.
Let me ask, do you have any more questions?
There was just one article that where they said that the, one of the focus groups, the parents were complaining that HYA really was not listening to their concerns. They were looking at their iPads, and they contradicted the parents, and then they decided the parents gotta book up a petition to not hire HYA out in Minneapolis.
I don't know the order in which that happened. When we run our focus groups, we take the notes. And what you see in our, in our leadership profile report are the comments that were made by that group. We don't, we don't take derogatory comments lightly, and we don't print them, as I said, and they're by our notes that we will take jointly. So all of that's presented to you as part of the leadership profile in the end. So that if, even if you had a question at that point, before it becomes accepted by the Board, we give you a draft, and we say, first of all, in an executive summary, these are what we found to be the general trends of all the groups. And then we break every group down specifically and say, these are the comments we got from that group. So they would be able to see their comments. Now, we're not gonna identify people, we, we identify people by groups. If we have a group of two people, or four people, we might combine those groups and identify the comments, and say, these are the combined groups, because we also don't want any one person to be out there for having made a comment. Because regardless of how anonymous that is, I would tell you point-blank, you will know who said something, so you know the people in Bayonne.
The kind of people.
You know, you know who they are. You will know who speaks at your board meetings and things like that. So there might be a comment that's made frequently that you could pick out. But in that case, we can, you know, I don't know how the Minneapolis search was done that way, 'cause it sounds a little bit like, you know, cart before the horse, but when we do it, you know, we give you all those comments, just as we will speak with you individually, board members, every board member. And we'll say, these are the comments of the board, not any one board member, but the entire board. You know, and if some are similar, we might only put it down once, but we, we put down those things. Because the collective board is one opinion, and individual board members may have different opinions. So we wanna make sure we capture that as well, and we do that as part of the process when we're here.
And as a practice, normally in those forums, once we collect the data, normally at the end of the meeting, we do one of those, so here's what I heard, and kind of check to make sure that the audience actually agrees with the comments that are gonna be captured in what we're gonna submit. So, there, there are various checkpoints for that.
Anyone think we need a recess?
I think we should.
Yeah.
Okay, you'd give us a couple minutes?
First, is there a motion for a quick recess?
A motion to recess.
A second?
A second.
So we have a motion from Trustee Cruden, a second from Trustee Munoz. We'll vote on that. Trustee Alonso?
Aye.
Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Velado?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
It is six forty-five, will be short. At this time, we're gonna reconvene the public meeting, and it's seven twenty. I'll take a roll call, make sure we didn't lose anybody. Trustee Alonso?
Present.
Trustee Cruden?
Here.
Trustee Munoz?
Present.
Trustee Velado?
Present.
President Broderick?
Here.
Dwight, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you very much. Hello again. We're glad you came back. We're gonna go through this as quickly as we can, but also make sure we get the work done that we need to get done.
Yes.
We did our introduction in number one. The HYA search process, I think you know what it is, but, you know, I'll briefly go over it, and then we'll address it again as we go through the calendar. Number one, you know, is some of the things we've gone through already, you know, in terms of, you know, talking about contract and who we are and all of that. But this, the actual search itself begins by meeting with focus groups, finding out information about the district. Simultaneous to that, a survey can go out where a, you know, a link can be put on your website or whatever, some public announcements, as well as the interviews with focus groups, be it one big community group, or the smaller groups. And we'd like to include both of those things. If you go back to the, I think it said we'd spend, I forget, two or three days in the district, we're not opposed to giving you extra days and not charging you, so don't, please get upset if we take an extra day or two. We figure each one of us has to spend two days in the district. So if, if we're here, if we can have all the focus groups scheduled, for instance, over a two-day period, three of us might be here. But that counts as our, you know, so we'll, we'll work that out to make sure we do it in a shorter, as short a period of time as we can to get the information in. All of that information from the survey and the focus groups goes into the leadership profile. The leadership profile has an executive summary in the front, and that will talk about all the participants in the groups, be it the focus groups or the, or the, or the survey, a chart that identifies the numbers, and then also you would have the trends, the common trends, strengths of the district, what are the challenges facing the district, and then in the end, what characteristics would, would you like to see in a new superintendent? Following that will be detailed data from every group, the comments that we got from all the groups, so that you can see that. People are not identified by name, they're identified by group. And as I said before, if we need to combine groups, we'll do that. At the very end of that will be a list of, I don't know, it could be ten things, it could be maybe a little more, but usually not more than ten, of these are the characteristics you'd like to see in a new superintendent. That's presented to the board as a leadership profile. And we say, this document guides the search, and that, it's not, it is the search, it guides the search. You look at it, and you say, well, maybe you wanna include a couple of other things in there. That's fine. Obviously, we don't change the comments people made, but in terms of characteristics, you may wanna change that. But you have the say over that. Usually, and in most cases, we share that profile with the candidates, because we want them to know as much about Bayonne as they can, besides their own research that they will do when we put the advertisements out. Simultaneous to that, we'll develop an ad. We should be able to create an ad for you to use by the end of the weekend, alright? For an initial piece. We would like to, and we'll talk about the, the packages, and there was a question about that, and I, and I, and I gave some numbers about the ad packages before, because if we could get, in package number one and package number two, there's a brief, a very brief ad that goes in Ed Week, and it's a one-liner, it basically says it's open, but that's got national exposure. If you could reach a determination on which package to use, or the fact that you're gonna use a package tonight, we could get that in, 'cause we need to get it in tomorrow, alright? For the next Ed Week, 'cause it comes out shortly next week. Alright, so that's there. So, cou- couple things going on at one time. Advertising, survey, focus group work, all going on kind of at the same time, and we'll talk about calendar later. And then we come out of that, and then there's a time you won't see us for a while, and that's the time between when we present the leadership profile to you, and we present a slate of candidates to you for you to consider. Because we're recruiting, we're looking at applications, we're holding what we call screening interviews, about forty minutes, forty-five minutes to an hour, usually, with candidates who we think match that profile. And then we will bring them to you, whether that's eight candidates or ten candidates. I have a, a, one group coming up on Monday, we have ten. And then the board will say, these are the people we'd like to see out of that group. Or the board can say, we don't see anybody now we think is qualified, you need to go back out and do more work, and then we would do that. We would also say that, you know, say we have ten, ten people we present to you, and we have thirty-five applicants. Then we would say, the other twenty-five applicants, this is why we did not select them. And we would tell you the kinds of experience they had and why we did not select them. And if you wanna pursue that further and look at those application materials, we'll share that with you, to you, with that, that with you at that time. We keep them confidential until that time. We try to keep it a confidential search, I explained a little bit about that last week, saying that, you know, people don't tend to apply to searches in New Jersey, and in states that keep confidentiality that way, where the laws are a little different, you know, it, it enriches your pool. Alright, so that's the process quickly, alright? I know in our presentation we did for you, if you need to review that, that's that chart we gave you there, alright? And we'll follow that pretty much to the line. In terms of executing the contract, number four on our agenda tonight, all the people are there that, you know, you know about us. And executing the contract, I guess we're in the process of doing that now. Confidentiality and community engagement, you know, we, we like to keep the search confidential, that's our assumption that the board wants to do, until such time you get to finalists. And then, you know, and, and some of that, you know, and, and in that process, if you hear anything that we need to know, that's important for us. Hey, we've gotten word that, you know, confidentiality's been broken, or, hey, we've gotten word that people are talking about this, how can you help us solve that? Now, you might say, how can that happen, and none of us know about it? You know, the old surprise thing we talked about. Well, and I think I gave an example when I did the presentation, I was, I was a finalist in Morristown, New Jersey, and I called up a colleague of mine who was in Persippany, and I said to him, you know, Tim, I'm really concerned about this, can you tell me something about Morris County so I know it? He said, Dwight, I can't talk to you, 'cause I'm a finalist too. So, he was a finalist in Morristown, and so was I, but we didn't know that, we were friends, we talked. That might happen, alright? That might happen. Even then, we try to keep confidentiality. Scheduling times for interviews with board members. We'd like to speak to board members individually, alright? All of them, all of you.
How much time do I have?
I'm saying them like you're not in a room. I apologize. I'm an English major, I should know better. But, you know, that interview is to deal with those same three areas that we deal with everyone. And, and we think that's important. We can schedule those for the times that we're in district, or we can do them by phone. So you don't need to do that tonight, okay?
And that's just the five of us, or all nine members?
That would be all nine members. All nine members.
All nine members, okay.
Yeah. Number seven is where it gets a little, you know, a little discussion period tonight, the focus groups, the identification of individuals and their groups who, who you think we should be with. On the nineteenth, you've got a community session planned. You know, and you, you can invite anyone you like to that, and we'll take our notes in those three areas, as you said. However, sometimes we do one or two community sessions, it appears as if you want your board members to be able to attend these, so maybe you wanna do one and see what happens, and if you need another one, maybe decide at that time. But in terms of the smaller groups, you know, here are, these are suggested groups that we have there on, on, under number seven. That doesn't mean that those are the groups you have to have, you, you may have groups that are different. I don't know if you have a foundation, usually PTO organization members, the superintendent and or administration might have a PTA council, PTO council.
We do have a foundation.
You do have a foundation, alright, so you have, so, fan?
Yeah.
Yeah, Family and Education Foundation.
Okay. You know, whether you want clergy groups and political groups to be separate, sometimes we say, organize community groups and include clergy, include political, depends on how you wanna do that. Student activity support groups, ban parents, you know, I always knew ban parents were big in my school districts, and, you know, or, or athletic, you know, the, the people who are the booster clubs.
Don't talk banned.
The booster clubs.
Don't talk banned.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
You're bringing up a good point.
Yes.
What we were talking about a little bit inside was the fact that, you know, a superintendent that might be very good in one district, doesn't mean he's gonna be good in our district.
Right.
Someone who's very good in our district may not be a very good superintendent, you know. Just give you an example, our background a little bit, you probably, you might know that, is that, like, our last four superintendents have all lived, come from Bayonne.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and, and we had one, I was telling them before, we had one that was, we're talking about years back now, that, probably in the seventies, that was from out of town, and it ended up being a disaster, you know? But certainly it looks like this time it's gonna be somebody certainly from out of town, but on the other hand, it has to be someone that's out of town, and knows how to deal with, in town, you know? So, I mean, the relationship there is critical.
The experiences factor matters.
We feel the same way. Right. Yeah. So anyway, you know, there's some suggested groups. We, we'd like to try to establish who those groups are, so that we can begin working with...
And we could add groups to this.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, this is just, this part's just a...
I'm attracting, you're ready?
No, 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 no. You, you can tailor it, tailor it for Bayonne.
How you break it up and add, you know?
Alright, for instance, we know we're gonna have one community meeting, so I'm putting that there now.
You're just attracting.
Alright.
Carol, of course, you're attracting. Combine these two, combine these two.
Yeah, that's what I'm doing.
And let me, let me do the easy ones, alright?
Okay.
We do know we wanna do elementary teachers and secondary teachers separately. They have different issues, they just do.
Do you want to do this one?
Yes. So we know those are two groups. Central office?
Yeah.
Usually, we say, usually it's secondary, we include middle school.
We don't have a middle school.
You don't have a middle school?
No.
Then that's easy. Then you have elementary and, and, yeah. They're combined.
But I think what you're saying is...
K eights?
Pre-K through eight, nine through twelve.
Okay.
But when I see middle school, I think you're saying that you would survey sixth through eighth grade.
No, he's gonna do pre-K through eight and nine through twelve.
Well, if you, if you have...
Yeah, well, I mean...
That's what we're gonna do.
So you're gonna survey a little pre-K student?
Teachers.
No, 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 no.
No, oh, oh, no, no, I'm talking about the middle school and high school students down in the bottom.
No, what we'll do there...
Probably one of the groups you crossed off, right down here in the bottom.
Let me help you. The, if we say students, and you don't have a middle school, now, your, your elementaries are pre-K eight.
Right.
Alright, so that, that would be pre-K eight teachers, and then we would say high school teachers.
Right.
Alright?
Can I ask, um, sorry, but how, how would that work? Is that, does that mean, let's say we're talking elementary school teachers, does that mean anyone who wants to come speaks, or would it be, would they get a group together?
Anyone who wants to come.
Everybody comes.
Yeah, if they, if they would like to, they can all come, they all won't.
Okay, great, alright, that's the fairest way.
And usually it's after school, so we would do it that way. And then secondary teachers.
Gotcha.
Central office administrators, you know, I don't know how large a group that is, it's usually a smaller group.
Four.
Four.
Four people.
And then you have principals and supervisors, who are usually district supervisors.
Talking maybe twenty-five.
Right, okay. Now, we don't have middle school students, so what I would do there is say, 'cause typically when we do middle school, we only do eighth graders anyway. So we would say eighth grade students, and then high school students, a sampling. And we do that because, you know, we wanna get the most mature out of that age group. I would love to talk to kindergarteners, but, you know, not about this.
Do we do something separate with the student government, maybe?
Um, you know...
Is that usually part of your...
Well, what we've done is, we, we leave, we've left that up to either the superintendent and or the high school principal. Sometimes they would like it to be the student government representatives to meet with us if it's twenty of them or whatever, because they represent everyone. Others want it to be more open, so they might, you know, make a different arrangement for other kinds of students to be included. It might be somebody from, it might be students from every club and activity, whatever it might be.
That's true.
We let them make that decision.
Okay.
Uh, 'cause that's important to them.
But the student government isn't always your vocational child, or, you know what I'm saying?
Right, right. And I think, you know, when it, we, we did one recently in Connecticut and, and they, they asked us to do something we hadn't tried before. And they said, could you just stop by the library and have different students who dropped in and meet with you? And we had trouble getting them to come and talk to us, because, you know, as, as much as kids don't wanna be told to do something, if you don't tell them to go sit there and talk to somebody, they won't. They'll avoid you. And they didn't wanna talk to a gray-haired guy in a suit, you know, in, in the middle of, the library in the middle of the school day. So we try to make that at a scheduled time to do that. All right. Chamber of Commerce. Is that a separate group we need to deal with?
I don't think so.
No, I don't feel that.
I think I'm crossing them off.
It's up to you.
She's crossing them off.
They're crossed off. That's it, we're done.
Carol made the call on that.
So I need to talk to her.
We're ta- we're taking Carol on that one? We should get off the list.
The chamber's off. Police department's important because they have involvements in all schools. Now, school safety, you know, so you want them to be separate?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Student activity support groups, those are band parents, booster clubs.
Stop with the band parents. I don't wanna hear band parents.
But you know what? You guys are giving their time to talk.
No, absolutely, I mean, I mean, that, that included cheerleading and the football boosters, everyone, right?
Right, we'll just say.
Can I ask you, what's the difference between those particular parents and then the open community member forum that you're gonna have, like where all parents can attend?
Well, because, you know, you might have others attend other than just parents at those community meetings.
All right.
So you try to pick up everyone.
And some are worried about extracurricular, you know.
Okay, I see what you're saying, all right, well, all right.
All right, so we have that. We eliminated the Chamber of Commerce. Political groups, anyhow, you know.
No need.
Do you have a relationship with, um, council, government, anybody?
I think we need that, only because we do a lot of inter-local, you know, we're always working together. One can't work without the other. Like it or not, sometimes we argue about it, but.
We do sign inter-locals, but I think it's still ultimately this board's responsibility to select the new superintendent. And I mean, if, if anyone from city government would like, in my personal opinion, if anyone from city government liked to add their two cents in, they could definitely show up to a community forum like everybody else.
And I just wanna make sure, because we don't wanna, I don't wanna step on anybody's toes, but you know where those toes are. I don't.
Yeah, we can step on toes, it's okay.
Okay.
Carol said we could do it.
I still need, I still need to know where they are.
I know where the toes are.
Who's the chairperson?
We'll talk.
Maybe we're very little talk.
Who's the chairperson in this committee? I'm just curious.
Carol.
Joe, no offense, Joe, I want Carol.
All right, so political groups are out. Clergy groups, again, that's, that's your call, because sometimes they have a great influence on a community.
What groups?
Clergy.
Clergy, clergy groups. You know, there could be a clergy council, I'm, I'm not sure. When I was in Morris Town, we had a clergy council.
Yeah, it's a public.
No, we're a public school. It's okay.
Well, okay.
Carol, I'm crossing that one off.
Yeah, no, public school, we don't need clergy.
Public school.
Well, I mean, I agree, we do have, we do have a parochial school educational system in town and, you know.
Okay, but I, yeah, but I'm talking about other entity.
That's only one religion.
And they could come to community meetings as well.
They could come to community meetings if they need to say something.
They could come to the council meeting.
Along, along with the city council.
Okay. And then we have, uh, PTO, we said yes, that's an organization. Um, so we get their, their, their leadership or a couple of representatives from each group. And then the foundation board members, are they active enough that we need to speak with them or should they be?
Yeah, they're very active.
Foundation?
Yeah, but.
No. We, we really.
Well.
We gotta decide that one.
Well, a lot of the foundation members are former administrators from the district and.
Some of our teachers that are teaching now.
So, yeah, but I mean, those teachers that are currently now can come to the teacher portion of it.
Right.
Um, I don't, I don't know, it's up to you.
Well, foundation members could also be included with student activity support groups, because that's what they do. They support students, don't they, and academic, I mean, that's up to you.
And a large part of them are active administrators and teachers right now.
So, yeah, we'll still get, we'll get their input, cause they're active faculty and administration.
Okay, so.
Separately or as part of another group?
You know, at, at this point, my feeling is, at this point, anybody who wants to speak, you get to speak.
Yes, I agree, but as long as they have a venue to go to.
Right.
Right.
You know, and if they have a different venue they can go to.
I certainly don't want anyone to come back and say, hey, nobody ever gave me a shot.
But they will. They will.
Yeah, I wanna make it, I wanna make it clear, I think the purpose of this is more to say, I don't think they need a separate meeting with this particular group, but not saying we don't wanna take feedback from anyone.
No, they can come to, we're having how many, how many, um, community meetings we having? One or two, right? So they can come to those.
So I'm scratching out foundation because they can attend other meetings. Michael, you were objecting to that, kind of.
No, I, I said the foundation, they should, they shouldn't have their own separate.
Okay, all right, I just wanna make sure I'm not missing it, and I could see you on the end, somebody's.
They overlap, so.
All right.
Can I bring up, what does anybody feel that the, um, the labor unions, the BTA, the BPSA and the ASME should have a separate?
Usually we meet, we, we have frequently met with union leadership separately.
Right.
Okay.
Is that something that you all agree with? Cause I think that's a vital piece of what we're doing.
Yes, yes.
Yes, all unions.
So all the unions should have their separate meeting, yes.
Each union should be separate?
No, no, all together, all together.
Union leadership in one group.
In one group. Union leadership.
Okay. Now, the only, uh, the only one we need to maybe get, we know we have one community meeting already. You may wanna do at least one more and run it in the morning and see what happens, because some people work, they do shift work, whatever else, they can't make the evening stuff. I don't know, that's up to you.
Can we livestream these meetings to the community?
Well, I mean, you, if you wanna do that, that's fine, but I don't know.
You don't gather?
I, I can't gather from the people who are watching.
No, 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 I, no, granted, but I mean, for a tr- you know, for a transparent process, do you think it's possible? Yeah, I, by the way, I'm towing you guys into the buses back there, I apologize.
He's the guy, he's the guy that's got it.
Yeah, I mean, but is it something that we could do? I mean.
For the community meetings.
Or would we record them and put them on our channel later?
You, you could do that, right, and, and I think, you know, but to gather input.
Our folks have to record.
Yeah, for, to gather input, that can't happen. If it's livestreamed, that's fine, just let us know so we wear blue.
Okay.
And, you know, and, you know, we wanna look good, I wanna have this on that night, you know, so, you know.
Or my skinny dress.
All right, thank you, all right.
All right, but I, but I would suggest at least, I know you have the one, but I would suggest at least one more. Only, only because maybe a different time of the day.
You mean a morning meeting?
Maybe a morning community meeting when people have a chance.
Can we do that morning on a weekend?
If we have to, we will.
Well, I'm just saying, it wouldn't make sense, I mean, my personal, to do it like at nine in the morning on a school day. I mean, how many people could actually show up today?
But it actually might be a time where I drop my kid off and then I'm coming to this meeting to, so I want.
Well, I mean, I, you know, um.
I don't know.
I'm saying I'm not opposed to weekends, I haven't checked with my partners yet, but, you know. They don't do a lot of.
Well, I don't think it should be that, do it on a weekend, but it doesn't have to be that early then.
No.
It could be eleven, twelve, one, somewhere in there.
Oh, I agree, I, no, I mean, he just said morning meetings, I was just thinking, who would, you know, on a weekday? But you're right, I see what you're saying, maybe dropping my kid off and then coming to the meeting.
Originally, that would be the purpose, but I don't.
Oh, okay, well then.
You have a better idea what that might yield than I.
Yeah, I didn't.
I think you're covering your bases. On the nineteenth, that's a night meeting.
Okay, that's fine.
And we'll pick another date for a daytime.
Right, okay, that's fine, that's fine.
Joe, they're not gonna be able to park their car to come into a meeting here on a weekday.
On the weekday.
Right.
No place to park.
We're gonna have low turnout then.
Yeah, you'll have no turnout, cause they won't be able to put the car.
Now, we've also used other venues. Uh, I don't know what your library venues are like or anything like that, or you have a place where people could meet outside of.
Parking's an issue.
Um, parking's an issue everywhere.
We could use a Resca.
Be able to park down there either.
You can't park.
No, there's no parking there either.
Wait, what about that whole?
The lot, I mean, yeah, no, midtown, the teachers will park underneath.
I get down there too.
I will figure that out, but yes, a morning meeting is good, I guess, go for.
A weekend meeting that we can arrange on Saturday.
Well, no, I, I know, but I understand what, what they're saying about a weekend meeting wouldn't be the same effect as a morning weekday, because the whole point of that is to capture like the stay-at-home mom that brings the kid to school, right?
There's about four of them in the city of Bayonne.
Stay-at-home moms?
Yeah, four.
Okay, so.
All right, five. Oh, they're just five.
So, I, I, I don't assume that's an accurate amount. So, so my, I guess, I see what you're saying. We, we'll come up with a venue.
All right, so this is what I have, folks. I have two community meetings, um, one meeting with PTA organizational members, one meeting with union leadership, um, one meeting with student activity support groups, one meeting with the police, uh, one meeting with elementary teachers, secondary teachers, um, one meeting with central office administrators, one meeting with principals and supervisors, one meeting with eighth grade students, one meeting with, um, high school students. That's what I have.
You're gonna get this done in three days?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, well, you know.
Maybe four. We need four with this.
And then, okay.
Well, it's a few days, okay.
All right, so those are the groups we agree upon?
Yeah, that's, yeah, I, I agree with that.
Okay, now, um, we'll work on the dates with your staff, whoever's gonna be our liaison here to try to get that scheduled.
Now, going back to that daytime meeting, you know, we don't have to advertise, cause, cause really, it's more the input that they're getting than I guess the five of you.
Uh-huh.
Mm-hmm.
Cause obviously some of you work and you're not gonna be able to make a daytime meeting. So that wouldn't be a public meeting, we could do it on a small committee basis.
Oh, so it's more their meeting than our meeting?
Right, that's actually, it is their meeting, cause they have to ask the questions.
The nineteenth is all of you.
We just listen.
The daytime is just whatever stragglers couldn't make the, and I don't mean to use the word straggler, but whoever couldn't make the nineteenth meeting.
Carol didn't cross them off yet.
There's obviously four of you, uh, are working.
Right, true.
I can make it.
But we do have personal days, so I mean.
I can make it.
Let's say if we all do show up.
Even if it's five, if, if, if the meeting's being run by, um, the company, they're just gonna generally be observing.
We just observe, we're observants.
That, that's what I'm saying. I'm not advertising.
Just don't gather in the back and make decisions.
So, any form of their meeting.
Trustees, the very last page of your packet has a calendar.
Yes.
All right, now, we've done number seven. Number eight are the online survey groups. Typically, we tell you to keep it to six, otherwise it costs more money to do the survey. Now, we also think, you know, the survey should be done in Spanish as well as English for this community.
Agreed. Is there, um, also an Arabic option?
Uh, that I don't know, I would, I, I think there is.
Is it possible that we could get that in Arabic? Is that an agreement with that?
Then the three, then the three would be subject to the, you know, the fee for that.
Yes, an additional fee.
How much is the fee?
It's sort of three fifty.
Something like that.
Well, then if you do two, it's, you know.
Three fifteen.
Three fifteen?
Per language.
Per language?
We should do Arabic, I think that's.
I agree, I think that our school population, I think that to capture everyone.
I think that's the next.
So we're gonna do Spanish and Arabic?
Yes.
Okay.
And English.
Well, yeah.
Well, I mean, I think that was a student, that was given.
I have, thank you.
You didn't cross that one off the list?
English is on the list.
All right, and those are the groups we usually include. We don't break them down as finitely as the focus groups, because we're already getting that information. So anyone, you know, all of those focus group members who attend those could also fill out the survey. But here we just have it broken down to administrator, community member, general community member, parent of a student attending school, a teacher, a support staff member, or student. That usually brings in a lot of good information that way. We do, um, there's, there's two surveys, one, one is called the, you know, kind of like the state of the school, you know, what's going on, that people like and don't like, and the other one deals with ranking characteristics of the superintendent. There's a page in there too, for them to provide input, um, which will remain confidential, of names of people they suggest to be superintendent. Now, we will check out all those names, um, some, most people take that seriously. Yeah, um, but sometimes you. Well, you're already saying no, but we're just getting.
So you're saying that.
If they had an idea.
Whoever takes that survey can now, can like recommend someone to be.
Yeah, they can recommend someone, you know, and that's fine, uh, and sometimes that's very valuable and sometimes, uh, again, most people take it seriously. On occasion, they don't, we don't look at them, but they're not.
Okay.
But are you comfortable with those, um, six groups? That, you know.
Say it one more time?
Administrators, everyone, central office, building, everybody, community members, uh, parents of student attending school, which are different than community members sometimes.
Yeah.
And, uh, teachers, uh, all of them, support staff members, all of them, and then students.
Number eight.
I'm sorry, yeah, it's number eight.
Oh. Here I am writing it down.
No, that's why I saw you. Yeah, I was looking at you, like, what are you running it down for, guys?
Just wanted to make sure, okay.
We remember it.
All right, for number nine.
That's a good teaching thing.
For number nine, you know, we have, uh, flexibility with that, you know, we say the number of candidates is usually six to ten. In Bayonne's case, it's more likely gonna be ten, uh, that we present for consideration. That would be the slate of candidates after we've done all the pre-screening, um, and we'll also give you all kinds of summaries on that as to how many we looked at, uh, with whom we've spoken, um, the backgrounds of everyone. Typically, when we're in the process of doing the recruiting and screening, we might give a weekly update or maybe a week and a half that says, you know, we, we've identified, we, we found thirty-five candidates, um, other data, you know, ten or sitting superintendents, three or assistants, a couple of principals, what their general background is. And then when we get down to presenting the slate, we go into all the details and provide that for you, as well as the ones we did in select. Everyone comfortable with that? I mean, there's no, there's nothing to be, I don't think there's anything to be uncomfortable with there, okay. Number ten, the candidate expenses, I would tell you, usually for the initial interviews with the boards, um, we tell candidates, you know, there's not gonna be expenses paid. Then you make a decision, you don't have to make that decision tonight, um, depending on where they're coming from. And usually, uh, if it's a, say it's a distance that's, you know, longer than, you know, midway across the United States, boards will put caps on that, you know, we'll pay up to something or whatever. And then you got all these New Jersey laws that I'm sure Gary will help us with.
Yeah, Mitchell helps us.
In terms of what you can do or not do with that. Usually with finalists, you might, you might say, who's the farthest away that you've ever hired recently? Earl Kim, who's now a superintendent in Stanford, you know, was from Hawaii, we never paid his expenses to come, because he, he thought that was outlandish. I think they may have given him a, a piece of it in the end, but, you know, we did a lot of things, um, via technology and whatnot, but, um, uh, usually, uh.
Most of ours didn't come further than Twentieth Street.
Nada. All right, and that's something you can decide along the way when you see what the field is and do that. The advertisements, um, you had, um, three advertisement packages that were presented.
Under the letter of agreement.
Under the letter of agreement, let me just look at it. It's, package one is nineteen fifty, and that includes a, a group print ad in Education Week, which is the most widely read, um, educational week.
I see it, I see it.
Or the end of the letter of agreement.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It's the one that's got a fancy color on it. Well, yours doesn't.
Do we have to pay for advertising or can we do a lot?
I agree. Package one is nineteen fifty, um, it's an HYA group print ad. That means, uh, the jobs are just listed in Edweek. That was the one I said, if you considered either.
Sorry, either?
Oh, okay. If you considered either package tonight, if you could agree upon a package, we'd have to get that in tomorrow. That just lists Bayonne very generally. It, it doesn't say anything in detail about your district. It includes an online listing on Edweek's top job site for thirty days, that's what they do electronically. Online showcase ad in Edweek and top school jobs homepages for seven days. When the print ad comes out, we'll be adding more copy to that, and that's what I said I'd get to you over the weekend. An online listing for AASA, that's the, uh, Administrators Association, National Association for thirty days. And that's posted on Ekra, Twitter, Ekra's our parent company, Twitter and LinkedIn. Package number two, uh, just expands that a little bit in terms of time. You still get, you get two HYA group print ads, which would be going in this week, and then again, the, the following, two weeks later, an online listing, which is the same as the first column, for thirty days, online showcase ad, more details, um, online listing, AASA, like the other one, online spotlight and preferred upgrades, AASA. They put in more information about the district and they, they say, you know, um, and then they may say qualifications or characteristics for the job, and then post it on Twitter. Package number three, um, I wouldn't have you pay that much money.
Okay, that's good.
All right, I mean, I'm a, you know, I told you last week I'm a lousy salesman, I just, I know, and that doesn't.
Well, I have a question.
Because I think you get as much out of, usually, uh, uh, and I'll, I'm sorry, Mr. Munoz.
No, no, it's fine, it's fine.
But I, usually districts of this size go with number two.
Okay.
Okay, now, you also have a couple of other options that follow on the next page.
Right, that's what I was gonna ask, what's the difference to the regional package and this? And if you purchased a regional package, is it on top of package one and two or in lieu of one and two?
Either way, okay, you could either do it on top of or in lieu of, all right? The regional will just be, uh, it's kind of a tri-state area look, uh, NJASA, uh, the New Jersey Association, the New York Association, the Connecticut Association, and then it's on LinkedIn. You don't get the Edweek piece with that. So could you do it separately? Yes, but you don't get the Edweek piece on there. If you look on the top, um, the middle one, I think is the important one. The Association of Latino Administrators and a National Alliance of Black School Educators, NASB. Allison NASB, I think that's a good place for you to advertise. You'll get, you'll draw candidates from that. So if you ask me for a recommendation, I would say package two and also the, uh, Allison NASB package. Okay? The regional is up to you. I think you get just as much bang for the buck out of Edweek and other people for that, and you go into the national organization anyway, uh, which sometimes some of these will pick up on, all right? If one of your administrators has a close tie with NJASA, which someone should, they might be able to get it up there for free. I'm a retired member, they won't give it to me for free. I don't know why, I've been, I almost used a bad word. I've been complaining about that for a long time. So, but, you know, um, my recommendation would be to go with package two and the Allison NASB. So that's a decision you have to make. I don't know if you wanna make that tonight or not. We need to know something so we can kick off, uh, something, at least the beginning of Edweek.
I like the.
I like it.
Okay.
Um, I like two, and I do like the Allison NASB, uh, option as well. I mean, I like the Northeast as well, but that's another ten fifty, and I know.
I don't think, you know, I, I don't think you'll get the bang for the buck, I just don't, because I think you're reaching those organizations through AASA.
Yeah, okay, that's fine, so we'll do that. Now, let me ask you, yeah.
I just wanted to ask, what is the Career Builder Network?
That's one of those online services that, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, you were looking.
It's under, it's right next to the.
Allison NASB, it's next to Allison NASB.
Oh, yeah. No, that's, that's linked to ASCD, that's the Curriculum Association. But most people who would be out there would also be involved in the other associations.
Oh, they would, okay.
Okay, most people.
So we all agree on those two things?
I, I.
Package two and Allison NASB?
I do.
I do.
Okay, that's what we're going with.
Right, that's good.
Um, question, so where does the end, uh, well, where does, um, and I'm just curious, just to put it out there, um, Star Ledger come in as well and, um.
If you wanna do Star Ledger, that's independent of us. If you wanna do Star Ledger, that's independent of us.
Okay.
That doesn't mean you can't. And usually they work through, districts work through some kind of broker for that, usually. I don't know what you do here. And then you take a look at it. And you'd use the same ad, but usually that's separate from us. That has a, a fairly good yield too. But don't go near New York Times. I mean, it's just not worth the money. You know, they.
Sure.
Yeah. I guess I'm on TV, I won't say anything else about New York Times. On the advertising costs, but it's pretty heavy. All right. Background checks. You don't have to make that decision now, but we've had an explanation for our due diligence, due diligence check. You know, the recommendation would be, and that follows the advertising services. When you talk about Baker U-Banks, when you get down to a finalist or maybe two, that's up to you. I wouldn't do three, I don't think for a district this size. But, you know, to do that full background check in addition to everything else we do. And that includes a media survey, a media background check, a web background check and. Yeah, and, and what is basically, you know, if you apply for a loan or a mortgage or anything like that, they'll go in and look at your finances. They'll look at all court judgments that may be out there. They'll look at all the records that may go a little deeper than you typically go for fingerprinting in a school district when you come in. Because they'll look nationwide. You know, they look for things like your typical offenses that may be out there, court records, child abuse, you know, whatever they may be out there. You don't have to decide how many, you don't have to say that you'll even do it right now. But I think you will based on what I know about you this evening. Because I think you should. It's kind of a final check. Salary infringed benefits, you know, usually what we say, especially in New Jersey, is somewhere, somewhere below cap to cap. You know, because that's kind of the range now in New Jersey. And that's certainly negotiable by the board. So we'll, you know, we'll say that to, to candidates, because they'll ask, what's the salary gonna be? You know, you have some people who may be in administrative positions that are, have not been affected by cap over the years, who may be taking a pay cut to be a superintendent. Depending on the situation. But, you know, they still wanna be a superintendent.
Is the cap below the limit yet?
Not yet.
No.
So in your packets are the last four superintendent contracts in the current cap law.
Right. And I, and I appreciate it. I asked Gary for that and he included that, and I think that's important. So, you know, that's what we talk about. We, we talk about a range. And when it gets down to the finals, when you have a candidate and you're gonna begin negotiating contracts, you, you do those details. If you ask us to assist in negotiations, we will. But, you know, we feel that's really better left up to the district and their, and where their attorneys. Because typically final candidates will also have an attorney sitting on the other side just to review things. All right. Residency expectations. You know, that's something that, you know, I need to hear from you. First of all, it's absolutely clear that if a candidate has the ability to live in a community, that's always an advantage. All right? We know that. But it's also something that's, you know. The candidate needs to know from the beginning. And candidates today have a lot of other responsibilities, family, moving, kids in schools, whatever. And usually what districts say now is, as long as it's within a reasonable difference, uh, distance. You know, and, and that, and that can be up to your interpretation. And you can ask candidates about that. You know, how, how are you gonna travel from Maine to Bayonne, you know, every day? How are you gonna make that? You know, or whatever, and that's an exaggeration, but, or maybe it's Western New Jersey, you know? And usually candidates will have answers for that. But if you're gonna say they need to be a resident of Bayonne, we need to know that as soon as possible.
We've never had one that wasn't a resident of Bayonne.
Well, that's cause we're here when they started.
No, hadn't, had a move into Bayonne.
I, I, I understand that, but I, I just need, we need to know that because candidates will ask.
Oh, we're gonna make it a requirement?
I don't know, I'm just saying we never had one that wasn't.
Can I just say, the issue, can I just say, like, so the issue is, is that, you know, educators, teachers, administrators, policemen, firemen have traditionally been exempted from that.
Right.
Because it's very limiting on the pool of candidates that you will attract. I, I think it would be unfair to say that you have to be a resident of Bayonne because that's really limiting.
Not just that we just never had one.
No, no, I'm just saying, no, I just wanted to put out there, like, I don't know if that was, should be a requirement, because nobody else in the state does that. Because teachers are exempt from that. We have to be residents of New Jersey.
New Jersey, that's correct.
But not a particular municipality.
Well, yeah, you'd have to be in a certain area. I think with, because we're saying about, I can give an example, just last week, we had a terrible fire down on one of the streets.
Andrew Street.
So the soup, you know, that's something with a super, because we use the, our ice rink as the center for the Red Cross to bring people. So, I mean, and, and it's just always, you never know when something's gonna happen or you have to get it. So he has to be within an area that, you know, he'd be comfortable coming, you know, that.
And that, and that's something, you know.
Actually, if they're gonna be, if they live two and a half hours away and they're commuting into Bayonne every day, you know, I don't know a reasonable person that would want to do that.
Correct. I mean, I think that, I would agree.
A norm, a reasonable person, if they're moving in, if they're from out of state, moving into the area, would move to an area that's closer to where they're gonna be working. And if they're in the state already, they're not coming up from, you know, all the way down south to come up to work every day. I mean, just like.
And we can, you know, we have, we'll address that issue as we screen candidates and let them know, you know, that is a generality. But, but I would agree. I mean, I've commuted as much as sixty-five miles and I've been as close as seven miles and living in a community. So, you know, the sixty-five miles wasn't bad at the time, because I was doing Marstown and it was, you know, gives you time to think. But you still have to be in that district and dedicate a lot of time to that district, and that's something you have to remember.
Right, right.
Because it does take time. Coming weekends, we're talking a lot. And you're on call twenty-four seven, that's important.
Right.
Only time I had a fire is when I was seven miles away, so I was lucky. But I, you know, but, but too, that you had to be, you had to be here.
I actually had a big weekend, because you also had a water main breakdown at Lincoln School. And so it's one of those things where it was in a couple of places that so previous.
New Jersey, New Jersey water mains are popping up all over the place, just like New York because of the old infrastructure.
Well, one of the good parts, I think, too, is that we also do have two, uh, two assistant superintendents that do live in the community. That can be there in acting in their stead until the superintendent gets here and wherever they're coming from.
Okay. And while it's not on that list, you bring up a good point. If there are, and I make this point, if you tell me you want it to be different, you just let me know. If there are inside candidates for this position, they follow the same process as everyone else. That's our rule.
Absolutely.
From beginning to the end. They get screened like everyone else. The materials are handed in like everyone else. And it's their decision as to whether they apply or not. And then if there are questions about that when we get to the end, we will say to you, we had X number of, you know, inside candidates. And this is how or why we feel they stacked up against the field. And then those are always your decisions to make down the road. Now, the only thing we may do a little bit differently, if we notice an inside candidate that's part of one of the focus groups and that may put them in a precarious position for an interview, all right? With the focus group, we might interview them alone. We've done that on occasion. Because sometimes people feel funny if they know somebody's applying or, or the person who's applying may feel funny reacting with the whole group. If that's made known to others or whatever, we don't know at that point. But just, just so you know that. So, but our rule is, everybody follows the same process.
Okay, excellent.
Okay. Transition services, we're not gonna talk about it. If you, if you, you got a long time to think about that. There's some extra costs for that. I told you I'm a terrible salesman. If you'd like us to get involved, you know, we will, but that's something you can talk about later. Calendar for the search is important. We're doing today. We know that we have on the nineteenth, a, a meeting with various, well, with a community focus group. We have to schedule the other focus groups between the nineteenth, and I'm saying March fourth, or, you know, moving forward until March fourth. And I don't, you know, we have to decide how we're gonna, who we will communicate to do that with. Yeah, we're looking now.
The online surveys, they open four days from now?
I can open it, if I wanted to, I could open it tomorrow. But, but, yeah.
And how would we convey that information to?
That, that should be, we will give you a link that puts people online. You can say somewhere on your website, Superintendent Search, online survey link is here. And then typically districts blast it out through however they send out blast app messages, through schools, PTAs, PTOs, whatever else. You may wanna have a posting, put some, obviously on your website, but I don't know if you have any way of communicating with a library or somewhere else where you might hit people that don't come to the schools. Let them know about it, let as many people know about it as possible, whatever your network of communication is. You know, to blast out to schools, that's the easy part. Sometimes picking up other people might be more difficult, but, but it's on the website. On occasion, school districts have put a note in the newspaper, if it's a local paper. Or if there's something online, it's a, like NJ.com or something like that, if you have access to someone who covers you, you may give them the information, say, hey, they can go there and do the survey. We'll get the link to you within, within a couple of days. The reason we go out to the nineteenth, between the nineteenth and March fourth, is because we need time to set up these meetings. You know, it takes a little time to do that. But if we're looking at, you know, the nineteenth being one meeting and if, for instance, it's a community meetings that night, it's a good day to have us here all day. You know, to do, to do the rest. So maybe that week, nineteenth, twenty, twentieth, twenty-first, something like that. To do the focus groups. Now, we would be setting that up with, through Gary, through you?
Superintendent's office.
And the superintendent's office, okay. To try to do that. So we'll hold with that. The online survey opening, everybody comfortable with the eleventh? I got the information to you? The only thing that might possibly hold us up, and I'll check tomorrow, is the one translation if they need to do it. I'll just double check that. Spanish is easy, English is easy, I know they're right there to get their hands on it. The Arabic, I think, is okay, but I don't know if that's gonna take more time.
Okay.
All right? And if it's gonna take more time, you know, we, I push them to say, all right, it's gonna take more time. How much more time? A day? You know, two days? Because we don't want it to go weeks. So, you know, it would be shortly right after that.
Do you wanna pick a day for the morning session?
I think you really have to do a weekend, because they're not gonna be able to put the cars anyplace if you pick a door.
No, well, we had said they could, well, Joe had said they could use a, and it's a good point, we could use a schoolyard.
Pick a different school.
We could, we could use a schoolyard just for, you know, two hours and then have everyone parking there and then leave, you know, wouldn't hurt.
Our, our community meetings generally take about two hours. Our other focus groups go between forty-five minutes and an hour.
You know, Washington School or Henry Harris School has a big parking lot or, even a rescue, I guess, we use their parking lot.
Okay, and, but they'd have a place for the people to meet.
That's right.
Not interrupting instruction.
Right. Let me ask you a question. You're doing the nineteenth, right, Gary? We said we're doing the nineteenth, it's a community meeting?
There's a PM meeting.
And then you had said about making a day out of it. Could you do an AM and a PM meeting in the same day?
Sure.
Just get everything done in one day? I don't know.
Well, the community meetings you get done in one day. You won't be able to do all of them, but yeah, I mean, I think we can do that.
He's like, take two to three.
We have a finance journey next.
Yeah, all right.
The nineteenth?
No, you haven't financed, on the twelfth, oh, you changed it to the nineteenth? But you don't have to be there.
This is gonna be in the morning too, right?
It's in the morning.
No, no, but we're talking about the nineteenth.
We have morning and afternoon.
Morning and afternoon.
We have it in the afternoon.
Well, yeah, just make sure this is really in the morning then, Gary.
No, no.
The nineteenth, we have one at seven.
Seven at nine.
Yeah, but we wanna do the morning one first.
Yeah, the morning one. They're talking about a finance meeting that, one o'clock.
This is the morning anyway.
We're fine, we'll just pick the morning time. On the nineteenth, and I'll find out if Dr. Wanda will go with school. Would be our best choice.
And we might be.
I'll ask the superintendent what school he thinks would be our best choice for the AM meeting.
Gotta be before lunch.
The PM meeting is right here.
It's gonna have to be over at eight.
So we'll stick with the nineteenth, right? And we'll fine tune what time the morning is.
Okay, and, and, you know, we were, we were kinda thinking out loud, maybe nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one, try to get them all.
To do your focus group.
Yeah.
Like I said, you don't need these folks for your focus groups, that's all on you.
They're welcome to be there, but, you know, sometimes people get reluctant to talk when board members are around.
I think it would be better.
Better without us.
Yeah. All right, now, okay, so we're good on that. We said the online survey could open the eleventh, closed. Advertising, excuse me, on or about February twenty-third. I think we're gonna be earlier than that, because I'm gonna try to get the ad done over the weekend to finalize it. But initially, the listing, the simple listing will be in Edweek, I think it's in, in about a week. Because you approved that package, they'll get it in there tomorrow. But that's just a minor listing, but the others will be done within a, certainly by the end of the weekend, we'll have an ad because we'll proof it. We would, we would then gather all that information and present to you the leadership profile the week of March eighth. You know, we're saying, no, that's different. March, I'm sorry, March eighteen.
Oh, eighteen.
Well, we pushed it out to March eighteenth. If we, if we get the focus groups done in February nineteenth, it could be the week of March eleventh. Cause I just realized I've got three writers now, not one.
So we can have those, the, the leadership profile by March eleventh?
I'm thinking that, that week, I don't know what's comfortable. Do you have a board meeting that week?
No. No.
Do you have one the eighteenth?
Twenty-seventh of March is our board meeting.
We gotta have it before then.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're fine. Yeah, just tell, if it's ready March eleventh, March eleventh we'll be here.
Well, all right, if that, I mean, if we can set the date, we'll set the date.
You know, that's, that's fine.
You tell us when it'll be done.
When you, when, when it's done, we'll be here.
The last input we get is the week of March. Survey closed. So I would say, all right, I'm looking at if, because we moved the focus group meetings up a little bit by a week. So that's why I said. March eleven, we'll, we'll, you know, if we absolutely can't do it by then, we'll, you know, deal with it. I mean, but we, I think we can put it together by then.
Well, do we wanna give ourselves a little cushion? The twelfth to fourteenth, March, what's the board feel?
The fourteenth.
Thursday to fourteenth, just to play it safe?
We don't, but, you know, prefer. So the eleventh doesn't work.
I'm good, and, and it's fine.
I don't know if the eleventh works or the twelfth.
What time are we talking about?
That would be our board meeting.
Twelfth?
Would be at night.
Okay. Wait, in the afternoon?
Okay, we'll say either the twelfth or the thirteenth.
Well, we were thinking we'd schedule a meeting for the fourteenth, give you a little section.
All right. Fourteen.
Fourteenth is good for everyone?
Six?
Yep.
Leadership profile on the fourteenth, okay.
Six is good?
Now, that evening, what we do is.
Gary, are you gonna, are you gonna update these as we go? Are you gonna give us a new?
Yeah. He will and we will. So we'll, you know, we'll. The other thing is that we give you a, a draft of it before we present it. The PowerPoint we presented on is an abbreviation of that draft. We don't do the whole PowerPoint. Typical presentation takes about, I don't know, thirty to forty minutes. And then we field any questions you may have, or if you're engaging public, we'll answer their questions too. What you'll see in the draft that you get, not the presentation, are all the things we talked about, the comments, the executive summary, all that stuff. All right? And we continue pre-screening, we're saying through, because you need, you need four to five weeks to do that, to do it, to do it well. And I don't wanna shortchange that process. So we're saying, right now, tentatively, we're saying April twenty-second for the presentation of the slate of candidates to the board. Now, you wanna set that date to twenty-second or to Monday?
So you wanna give a cushion, Tuesday to twenty-third?
Yeah.
Wednesday to twenty-fourth?
Okay, that's better than my, oh, twenty.
Close to spring break that week, don't we?
Is it?
Is that?
Yeah.
Close to Easter.
Easter, Easter Sunday for twenty-fourth.
Board members go on spring break?
We can't, we can't meet at twenty-second?
I can meet, I'll be here.
You can meet?
I'll be here.
You'll be here?
Well, hold on, are we allowed to meet during spring break?
Yeah.
Of course we are.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just, I mean.
We don't wanna inconvenience anybody, so.
No, we're all here.
I don't want the board secretary to miss the spring break.
I may not be here, but, you know, though, you work around.
Yeah.
What happens if you're not here? Who takes over?
You do.
Okay, good.
All right. The twenty-second's fine, that's even better.
Well, we said twenty, twenty-third.
Oh, twenty-third, beautiful.
Maybe the twenty-third.
Twenty-third is good. Just down.
All right.
Yes.
For the twenty-third?
And what time would you like the twenty-third?
No, that could really be anytime, because we're off.
Are we off? I don't know, come on.
Are you off the week after Easter or before?
I'm actually, oh, I'm, for the first time in twelve years, I'm actually off the week before.
Oh, you are? The first time in twelve years?
Yeah, for the first time in twelve years, yeah.
Is that when the school's closed?
No, the school's closed the week after, this school.
Go, go for six o'clock.
No, so six o'clock again, perfect.
Yeah, sorry about that, guys.
No, I'm good.
The school closed that week that we're coming, twenty-third?
Twenty-third, six o'clock.
So we can do it earlier, right?
No, because he's working, he's back at, he's back at work.
And I could do it, I could do it at five. Six o'clock, yeah, six o'clock.
All right.
Sorry, guys.
The twenty-third is the slate. Now, the board initial interviews usually occur a week and most or two afterwards. Depending on the number of candidates you select, you need two to three nights. Some boards on occasion have selected a weekend day and try to do five or something. That can be pretty exhausting. That's not easy, not easy as it sounds. So, you know.
Brain work.
Yeah, that's, that's up to you. The three of us don't need to be there for that, but one of us will be, you know, to help you debrief after those sessions.
So that would be April twenty?
Either April, the week of April twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth.
Or, well, I would suggest the twenty-ninth. And you might say, how do you get candidates back that quickly after the slate's presented? Because during our screening interviews, we tell them, be ready for the next week.
Okay.
So are we gonna try for that week?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You have, you know, I don't know, what's your, you have a board meeting scheduled that week, Gary?
The thirtieth.
All right, cause you don't wanna do anything else, but he's gonna, and I wanna do a board meeting and interview. It'll be very tight. That's a long night.
So why don't we use it on the twenty-third, too? Would that, would that be a board meeting or not?
No, twenty-third is the leader, is the slate, presenting slate of candidates.
Gotcha, okay.
So the board meetings, we're gonna use that day.
We're gonna need three other dates.
So we're going into May.
So we're looking at Thursday, maybe May second?
Oh, okay, so I'm not in town the third or the fourth, I just wanna give everyone a heads up.
And I'm not in town the Saturday.
They can't use the third.
So how about going back to the second, Thursday to the second?
Start meeting on the weekend.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thursday to the second?
What about Wednesday and Thursday, the first and second? No, we don't, we need what?
You'll need, you'll need at least the first and second.
Okay, we need two days, I'm sorry.
First and second.
And then, you know, and if we, if we think the slate's gonna be bigger, we'll try to get to you ahead of time if you need to do more. You know, you can't do the thirtieth. So, if you need a third date, you probably have to back it up to twenty-nine, one and two.
Right.
You wanna do that now and reserve it?
Yes. We could do twenty-nine and then one and two, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, those three days?
So you have those three days at least reserved, and then we kinda figure it out.
They're gonna be at night, too?
At night, second again?
The earlier you can start, the better on those, but it should be in the evening, that works out, you know, we'll.
Say six PM?
I would say six o'clock.
Yeah, usually that's about an hour interview with a little bit of time in between, you know, a little bit. And then we do a debriefing at the end of the evening. And then at the end of the three days, we do a debriefing and say, who do you wanna bring back? Now, the semifinalists would be the week after that usually, so.
Okay.
Uh, or two weeks after that, that's up to you. Originally, we said May sixth, the week of May sixth.
So by May sixth will be, the week of May sixth will be bringing in the, the finalists.
Semifinalists.
Semifinalists.
You're gonna take, you're gonna take your slate from about, you know, the initial interviews, if you have eight, if you have nine, you can squeeze them in. You're gonna get that down to maybe five, four or five, and then you're gonna bring them in as semifinalists. And then that second interview session is usually one day where you focus in on specific candidates and get all the questions answered you didn't have answered the first time around. And by then, we will vetted them even more and throw in things to help you out.
I see you keep this timeline, sixth and the thirteenth, then?
Yeah.
And then the finalists, the following week, the thirteenth, the week of the thirteenth. Yeah, that's good.
You may need.
We're kind of close.
You may need two nights for that, I don't know.
All right, I may not be around that, that week.
The sixth and seventh?
Uh, no, sixth and seventh I'll be here. I'm talking more like, like ninth, tenth, you know, thirteenth, fourteenth, that type of thing.
Can we do, um, I don't know, can we do seventh and eighth instead of sixth and seventh?
Good, seventh and eighth.
Mm-hmm.
All right? And then, um, finalists, you know, we'll, we'll have to, you know, you've got a couple of decisions to make on, you know, to think about, what do you want that interview to look like? Usually, when you have finalists in, first interview, kinda general, keep it structured, almost all the candidates answer the same questions. Some variants. Second interview, you're digging in on individual candidates, things you've learned about them, things you wanna find out that, that really stuck out or didn't get answered the first time around. Third interview, you probably wanna have them engaged in some kind of exercise so you can see their talents. Uh, we've had people do, um, simulated budget presentations, things of that nature. Uh, we've steered away from entry plans because you can go on the internet and get any number of entry plans you wanna get. All right? Uh, and they may all seem good on paper, but they may not be, it's not that they're not original, it's just that they may not be tailored enough for Bayonne. So you may wanna have them tackle a particular issue that's crucial to Bayonne, even though they may not have the answer, they'll be able to say, these are options and this is what I think. So you haven't participated in that kind of thing.
And the.
All right?
Also, you're gonna.
And then you'll be making your decision.
Yeah, so I'll find out the dates for me.
All right. So we've got the semifinalists, seventh and eighth. Finalists?
We, we might have to bump that to the following week, the week of the twentieth.
All right.
For the finalists, then?
Yeah.
Jeff's not gonna be around.
Okay. You're saying the twenty. Or the twenty-first, can we use the twenty-first? We're trying to, you're a little bit away from Mondays, but.
Yeah, Monday.
Twenty-first?
We, we've got committees, but we could, we could bump that, uh.
On the twenty-first?
Yeah, we, but we could be done.
All right.
Maybe on that one, we'd say, how many candidates would that be? We're doing one night?
Two to three, right?
Two to three, one night?
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be two or three, we do it in one night, I think, um.
Let's say six o'clock on the twenty-first, and we may just rearrange our committee schedules for that day.
Now, why such a jump between May thirteenth and then the board members conduct site visit on June third? Why such a time gap? I mean, I know Memorial Day isn't there, but.
Well, I think originally we had, we just kinda planned it out to give you some time, time for people to make those arrangements and everything else. It doesn't have to be that far out. Uh, that's what you're gonna do. You have, first of all, you have to decide if you're gonna do a site visit.
Right, right, is that something that we as a board wanna do, go to another candidate's district?
No.
Well.
I don't, I think that.
I think it's a good idea.
I mean, I wouldn't lock yourselves in right now.
You know, yeah, I mean.
You don't have to lock into it, right?
No, you don't have to lock in, there are pros and cons.
I mean, there are pros and cons, I think that a lot of it would be window dressing. I don't think you're gonna get the real scoop, you know, to be honest.
Most districts now are not doing that. You know, and, and, and lo and behold, someone's gonna give me an article where they did it. But, but, you know, most are not. The last district that I had that did that was Franklin Township. And that was a big district, but, you know, um, that's like three years ago. Um, I haven't had any do that recently.
Yeah, like, why would they allow us to go to their district and look?
Well, no, they, they would allow it, but, you know, that person, whoever the candidate is, has to set that up. Um, it gives you an opportunity to see some of the skills they have and make some judgments based upon who they have there. But by the same token, some boards think it's a opportunity for them to kinda walk into an office or the halls and get freelance information. Can't do that, it's gotta be structured, especially the way school security is now and all of that. And it's, and it's never structured to the negative, you know that already.